May everything we do to find to be to your glory and honor. It's in your most precious and holy name, my dear human being.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is the greatest of all time. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of the United States of America. I am in Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state. I must say, my God, I am in this school.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions. Up first, we have Ms. Patricia from Infinity Early College High School.
Hey, good evening. I'm happy to share some of the amazing staff and students that are part of Infinity Early College. First, I'd like to recognize Becky Harrison. Becky has been in child nutrition for 22 years. She continues to love cooking delicious food for our students and staff. Ms. Austin, our former cafeteria manager, describes her as a team leader and always ready to help when needed. It is important that everyone is filled in, including, though we include our cafeteria workers as part of the family, and we join in with them from time to time, jumping in, serving food, and we have a good time, and she kind of freaks out on us when we get back there. But we have a good time with them, and Ms. Harrison, we thank you for everything you've done. Ms. Renee Cook, she is our head custodian, and we are truly, truly blessed to have her at Infinity. It took some time, but we found the perfect fit for our little unicorn campus. Ms. Renee is one, is on point at all times and eager to make everyone happy. Her willingness to work with and not shy away from my OCD to match the vision of Infinity has shaped up nicely for us. I can't say enough many positive things about this young lady other than we are truly grateful for all that she does and continues to do. Ms. Gonzalez. For anyone that knows Lorraine, she's a huge Wonder Woman superfan. I would like to say that she embodies some of the Wonder Woman traits. I did a little Googling. For any superfan, you know that Wonder Woman possesses six traits: fearlessness, perseverance, self-williness, strength, curiosity, and compassion. As the first face anyone sees coming into Infinity, they're greeted by this fearless lady as she is the first in line of everything. Managing questions, being safety-conscious, all while respecting each visitor and making them feel important and welcome. We are blessed to have Lorraine and thankful for all that she does. Ms. Cassie Lovell. Cassie is this year's actual Teacher of the Year. The vote was unanimous, and I was not surprised in the least. The confidence in her colleagues they see in her on a daily basis. From the moment I stepped on campus, I personally gravitated towards her and her person. She develops authentic relationships with students that draws them into her learning environment. She is invested in each of her students and teaches them specifically what they need and their, into their learning style. Please do not mistake her quiet nature as a weakness, for her strength is found in the delivery of instruction and how it is received by her students. You cannot fake authentic, gentle, caring, genuine positive regard for another human being. She's the real deal, Cassie Lovell. Ms. Pietra, step forward. This is Raina Pietra. Folks, if I could rewind the clock three and a half years ago, which we're about to, I would have never guessed, one, that I would be standing here as a principal, and two, that I would be talking about this young lady. Raina is exactly what Early College is all about. Raina is a tough kiddo. Back in the day, as her counselor two years ago, I was worried about her trajectory. With the help of many resources and staff, Raina has turned a huge corner and is about to graduate high school. She will also be earning her associate's degree. If you asked Raina now if she thought this would be happening, she would probably told you, but no. However, this kid has grit. She is a fighter doing something for a bigger purpose. Raina is, Raina is headed to Cowery Bible College, and she calls, and she continues to call it another passion of hers, Raina Pietra. And last but not least, Ms. Casey Barx, stand up. Casey is another senior who will be graduated soon with her high school diploma and her associate's from One Star College. The past few years have been challenging for Casey and her family, but she has maintained her laser focus on her future. Casey has currently enrolled in many advanced college art classes and plans to continue her studies at the University of North Texas. There's no doubt in my mind that we're going to be a superstar.
Up next, from Porter Elementary, Ms. Fonz.
Tonight, I have four members of our Porter Elementary Eagle family that I would like to recognize tonight. The first one is, there's a fifth person, and she's not able to be here today. She's just not feeling well, but I do not, I don't want to forget her in recognizing her for her efforts on our campus. Her name is Michelle Peelmore, and she is our cafeteria service manager. She's new to the position at Porter Elementary, and she has just stepped into that role. I don't know if it was kind of reluctantly at first, but she stepped in and she's taken it full-fledged and has just claimed ownership of that cafeteria for me and serving her kids daily, figuring out crazy schedules if I'm needing to adjust sack lunches here or there, high coke trips. But she's flexible, she's organized, and she gets the job done to serve our staff and our students every day. So I do want to recognize Michelle Peelmore for that. I also want to recognize Maureen Hicks. She is our paraprofessional that I want to recognize today. Maureen has been with Porter Elementary, if not over 20 years, right at 20 years, faithfully serving the students of Porter Elementary. And I can say that students are her focus 100%. She will go wherever I need her to go. She will do whatever I need her to do without a blink of an eye. If, if you need a lot of encouragement, Maureen is the person who's going to give it to you when you least expect it. And so if everybody could be like Maureen, our role would be amazing. And so, Maureen, thank you so much for your work. My next employee that I'd like to recognize is also new to Porter Elementary, and it's Richard Minchu. Richard was transferred to my campus as my head custodian Octoberish, Novemberish, I believe it was. It was after school had started, and he too just went up and put that position head-on. He came to me, I want to say within the first two weeks of school, saying, have you thought about this? Have you thought that we maybe we adjusted lunch schedules here? We could smooth things out a little bit. So I love that his mind is active before our campus. When we had our first family night, it was one of those things that we kind of just threw on him and said, oh, by the way, we have a family night tonight. And he got in there and arranged the cafeteria in a way that I had never thought of arranging it, and it was so warm and welcoming and inviting to our families that came in. So I love, Richard, your initiative that you take on our campus and the pride that you take in keeping our campus clean and in the shape that it is today. So thank you very much. I want to recognize our Student of the Month that we're recognized tonight. It's Ms. Emily McCants. She's a fifth grade student at Porter Elementary. Emily, how long have you been at Porter Elementary?
Six years.
Since six years, since you started your elementary career. So she's seen Porter Elementary through different phases and through different leaderships. But Emily is one of those students that will be a bright shining spot in your day when you walk in the front door. She, she's part of my welcoming crew. At the beginning of the year, when we had little 3K kindergarten kids who were coming in crying, not wanting to leave mom, she steps into that role of walking up to the cafeteria to get their breakfast. She's got two or three other friends who I know are going to be faithfully at the front door without even asking to be there. They've got a cute little welcome thing that they do, and it brings a smile. Look at her smile right now. It's what she brings to the campus every day. And little children who have been more hesitant or unsure, they see those students faces, and they bring, they bring joy to the campus. Let me tell you a little bit about her besides all of that. Emily is an ambassador on our campus, serving at our ambassadors club. She's also in our yearbook committee, taking pictures out for our yearbook. This year, she represented Porter Elementary at our UIL competition in ready writing and oral reading. And then I was told that in two minutes' notice, she was asked to fill in in dictionary skills. And she stepped into that with maybe 30 seconds of preparation from the academic board for that event, and she took fourth in the district in that event. So we're super proud of her. Emily is an amazing student. Emily, I cannot wait to see what you grow up to be in middle school and high school and then college afterwards. So thank you. And the last but not least, it's Mr. TJ Burr, who is our Teacher of the Year. He was nominated by our staff and voted on to represent us as our Teacher of the Year for this year, and I cannot say that my, my campus did not let me down in picking someone who was worthy of this recognition. TJ has been at Porter Elementary for three years. He was there for two years and then made a poor decision and decided to go to another district last year. He saw the error of his ways, and he came back this year. When he called in this summer, he said, Jerry, there's a possibility that we're moving back. Do you have anything open? And I said, I do. I said, but I've got an interview, and I need to get it filled. But I said, I'll hold it open for you. And he was one of my last hires to do. I waited till the very end because I was hoping and praying against all things that he would be able to make that move back into our area. So we have been lucky to get TJ back home at Porter Elementary. He is a man who brings joy into the room, into the campus. He mixes levity with seriousness and professionalism in an appropriate manner. And so as a special ed team leader on our campus, someone who's working to get his diagnostic certification, he is a growing and upcoming leader in our district, and I'm proud that he is part of Porter Elementary.
Okay, up next, Ms. Jenny Good will be presenting for credit recovery. Senator.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to be here with Credit Recovery. Folks, and wanted to tell you a little bit about each one of them. First off, ours is Teacher of the Month, that's Mr. Michael Samson. He teaches all of the math in credit recovery. A lot of our students come to us, and many of the things they're visiting are math. So when you ask which subject does he teach, it's all math courses. So you've got to be ready to teach algebra one minute and algebra two in the next minute, and geometry, and lots of others. But more than that, Mr. Samson spends a lot of time getting to know our students, building relationships with our students, and serving a student population that is just a little bit under the gun, you know, that have all behind for one reason or another. It really needs some extra help. He's very patient with them and helps them get exactly where they need to. He does a lot of things for us as far as helping us with data and keeping up with what we've accomplished in that area. And I couldn't even begin to tell you all of what he does. There's spreadsheets and things. Anything I ask him to do, he comes and finds a way for us to do that. So I always appreciate Mr. Samson and all the ways that he contributes to credit recovery. Our paraprofessional is Ms. Mercedes Fitch. She is our receptionist in the annex. So if you come through there, you'll see her bright smiling face there. She also has to field all of our kids coming in. Some of ours come from the different high schools, and they're on the new campus. Maybe don't know exactly where to go. She's always very helpful with them and with their parents, making sure that they get where we are safely. And when we have visitors come, we have different people come and work with those kids, she's always making sure that those folks are able to get to us and serve us in the way that they need to. We appreciate how cheerful she is that she serves all the students in credit recovery. Our custodian is Ms. Evelyn LeGroom. She helps us so much. Our kids have little get-togethers and some things that they are, and she's always willing to help, either put up or take down that. She comes in and anything that we need, and we're, we're just a little section over there, but anything that we need, she comes and checks on us and sees what we need. And she's willing to do anything for our students and anything to make our program run well. We really appreciate that. Our child nutrition employee is actually the manager of our cafeteria at the annex. We have students sometimes who come with different needs, like we have one that couldn't really be in a room full of kids. So she made a way for that student to be able to pick his lunch, eat over where we were, or if they need to come early, so they need to just come in a little early. Anything that we need as far as a student, as far as accommodation, she really works with us to make sure that those students are comfortable and get the nutrition that they need. We appreciate that very much.
Okay, up next, Mr. Paul. Is that what will be given as an update with Energy G?
Hi, my name is Paul. I work with New Caney High School. Hi, my name is Mark Della. I'm with Energy G Texas. Thank you so much, School Board, and Superintendent Franklin, for allowing me to be here today. I would love to share with you more about the relationship that both Energy G Texas and New Caney have when it comes to energy efficiency. So in Energy G Texas, we care deeply about the school districts we serve, and we understand the importance of putting as many dollars back in the classroom as possible. One of our core values is we want to be not just serving our community with electricity, we want to actually be members of the community and helping you in all the ways as possible. At Energy G Texas, we care so much about our community that we actually instituted programs that help our non-residential customers save on their power. We call this program Commercial Solutions. Through this program, we actually help our customers by making energy efficiency more economical by providing you incentives to install new equipment. Some of the new equipment that we help you with is LED lighting, H-act equipment, and a number of other different measures that we can do. So what we want to do is we're going to help you put as many dollars back in the classroom as possible. So today, I want to talk to you about what we did in 2018. 2018 was a great year for New Caney High School. You completed several infrastructure projects, including the Aquatic Center, Brookwood Elementary, Dogwood Elementary, and Early College High School. You also completed a large lighting retrofit at this facility here in the stadium by converting all your parking lights daily again. In total, in 2018, New Caney earned over $36,000 in incentives that went straight back to your bank account. And you ended up saving over 300 kilowatts, 1.3 million kilowatt hours. Now, those are really nice numbers, but what does that mean in dollars? That's equivalent to saving $120,000 in power by doing these different energy efficient projects. Now, the great thing about energy efficient projects is not only are you saving dollars, but you're also saving the environment as well. So by completing these projects, you ended up reducing your carbon footprint by 217 carbs and over 114,000 gallons of gasoline. Now, you're looking at this check, and this check doesn't say $36,000. Actually, it's a very big number. Tonight is a very special check presentation we wanted to do with New Caney High School. In 2018 marks the 11th consecutive year that New Caney High School has participated in a program. And very few of our customers can say that they've had that much of a long visitation. So the check we're presenting tonight is your overall incentive that you've earned from 2008 to 2018. So within the course of those 11 years, New Caney has saved over 1,224 kilowatts, over 3.9 kilowatt hours, a million kilowatt hours, and you've earned over $200,000 in incentives. So very well job, New Caney High School. Now, the great thing is news is when it comes to actually saving on your bill, over these past 10 years, New Caney High School has saved over $3.7 million on their power. So I am very pleased for New Caney High School. You guys have been a member and a pillar of energy efficiency throughout the region. And Paul has been an amazing person to work with. He gets us our stuff on time. He lets us know about future projects. And he's actually the president of the local TINA, Texas Energy Managers Association. So New Caney has just been a very great part of the work, and we're very excited to be giving you this check tonight. Now, for energy savings when it comes to the environment, based on these 10 years, we've been able to take 621 cars off the road and save over 326,000 gallons of gasoline. So I have one last question I want to ask you tonight. Do you want to hold the check?
Item number three on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School arts, presented by Ms. Rhoad.
Hi, this is a consideration for the Congressional Art Contest, in which the logistics of planning this trip and the timing of this trip is very stressful. And so we, we don't know who this winner is at this point, or if we have a winner. But if, if in the event that Porter High School or New Caney High School has a winner, that this logistics are already in place, and so that thing can roll forward a little smoother.
Want to speak to your track record?
Porter High School, this event has been going on for the last five years. It is Congressional District Eight, Congressman Brady, his Congressional Art Contest. And we have had the honor of having four out of the last five entries be exhibited in Washington, DC.
Are there any other questions? Further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for Porter High School arts? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, vote will be taken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is not opposed, the motion is approved.
Thank you so much, and you will receive an email sometime before May 30.
Can you tell us real quick how we did in Houston one more time? How did the kids go Houston one more time? I'd like to hear it.
Our Houston winners, we had two that made Grand Prix. Kennedy Fonzel and, I mean, Gracie Evers. And we had a Kennedy Fonzel and two other students make the Western Art Academy. So they'll be staying at Kerrville at University for an entire month. And we had a few kids make the auction. And I think their tour was like $30,000.
Another successful year, good job. Yes, ma'am, we appreciate you much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item four on the agenda is a consideration of out-of-state field trip for New Caney High School Porter High School CTE teams, presented by Mr. Warren.
Thank you very much. Continuing the success of the New Caney High School, we would like to ask for your permission for New Caney High School for high school CTE teams that competed at state during the past couple of weeks to be able to go to nationals. The first two teams I just want to talk about real, real quickly. Both these teams are culinary. Our culinary departments went through a transition this year. We have new teachers that are ahead of those departments. And Porter High School is two new teachers altogether within the district. And both of these teams are qualified for national competition. Next team is for SCC LA is the Porter High School Fashion Design Team. This individual is the first-time award winner out of New Caney High School in fashion design. Skills USA, we continue to do really well there. Also, Criminal Justice knocks it out of the parks most all the time. They have a couple of students going for national recognition and running for national office. Cosmetology at Porter High School, New Caney High School will be the national competition also. The SCC LA competition will be June 30th to July 4th in Anaheim, California. Skills USA is the 24th and 28th, 28th of June in Louisville, Kentucky. All these funds that pay for these trips are all budgeted within the CTE department on a yearly budget. So we are anticipating these. We just ask for your permission.
Any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for New Caney High School for Porter High School CTE teams? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Item number five on the agenda is PASA demographic report by Mr. Poole and Mr. Silhade.
I'm Justin Silhade. Okay, thank you so much for backing us here today. Can everyone hear me? And I just wanted to ask real quick, do you guys have the presentation in front of you on your screens or?
Yep.
So you're just, okay, all right, great. Well, we're going to break this up into two pieces. I'm here to discuss about our research, our housing projections, and our overall district-wide enrollment projections for our 10-year demographic study. And then my colleague, Chris Poole, will kind of split off and she'll share with you how we develop our student projections for individual campuses and discuss long-range planning as well. So I'm going to jump right in here and turn this on first. There we go. There we go. Okay, so the last study we performed for you all here in New Caney was in the fall 2015 school year, 2015-16. We were in the midst of an oil price crisis here in Houston metro area. So just kind of giving you some background on when we were here last. But we've essentially surveyed real estate professionals. We've given you guys in this book that you'll have later, we've given you all analysis of private schools. private schools, charter schools, and every housing development that is occurring in the district or planned in the district currently. And so, we then put those together and we form enrollment projections. Our firm works with the majority of school districts around Houston metro. We work for eight of the top 10 high-growth districts in Texas. So we're very, very familiar. In the last year, we've completed five reports for five of the six school districts in Montgomery County. So we're not tired of you guys yet, and we keep coming back for more. But what we do is we put together our housing projections and maps. We're demographers, so everything in here is map-oriented. And we've also provided D E N I a bunch of rolled-up maps, and they're large, poster-sized maps for you all. So they've got every parcel in the district, all, a lot of landowners are listed, it's a large parcel. You'll be able to really review that and spend some time looking over that as well. So we put all that together, including economic data, we geocode your current students, and we look long-range. We put all these projections, annual projections together, and we look at your actual attendance zones, and we project forward 10 years. And Chris will get into that later. The one thing I like to do starting off is to just jump in with growth in the region. So people ask us a lot, where's everyone coming from? How are we, why are we growing so much? You know, we're kind of used to it in this metro area. But this is just a chart showing data through 2017 of metro area growth from the U.S. Census. The newest data from last year actually comes out Thursday, so I don't have that to share. But it shows you that generally annually, Houston metro gains between 90,000 and 130,000 people a year. That red line is your natural increase. So over half of that growth, or about half, is just due to births and subtract deaths. So it's really just a natural local increase. But that blue line is your domestic migration. You can see in 2017, it really fell off. We were still seeing effects of the oil crisis. But I wanted to show you here, Montgomery County in particular, you guys gained between 10,000 and 20,000 people annually. So roughly 15%, 17% of metro Houston's growth is in this county. And that's actually increasing. That percentage is slowly ticking up. In Montgomery County alone, the domestic migration makes up three-quarters of the group. So people moving from other counties into Montgomery County, or even other states. Now, when we look at school districts in the Houston metro region, it's another, it's a different story. We're going to show you a series of maps here that highlights individual districts in New Caney circled right there in the northeast area of Montgomery County. So all your red districts here, your largest school districts, Houston, Cyfair I S D with over 100,000. Now, when you look at numeric change in enrollment from fall 2016 to 2017, this is another data element where the state has just revised the data, so I don't have every school district to share with you. We'll be getting that to administration. But you guys, in that one-year period, were the 12th fastest-growing school district numerically with over 360 students added. Percentage-wise, about the same, 2.5% increase in that year, so it made you 14. A lot of the Harris County school districts are actually starting to lose students, and a lot of that's due to charter growth, and I'll get to that in a minute. Now, when you look at a five-year growth pattern, I like this map and the next one as well. It shows that New Caney is actually number 11 on the list with over 3,400, almost 3,500 new students in five years out of 61 school districts, you're number 11. But when you look at that percentage-wise, you're actually number five percentage-wise. So you've grown by over 30% in those five years. And truth be told, you're number four, because Texas City only grew because they were forced to annex Lamar I S D. So really, you're number four in binder growth, at least from last year. Now, looking at New Caney specifics, you're used to 5% to 7% annual growth for a long time. When you look at your annual year-to-year growth, a couple of years ago, that started to slow. It hasn't really changed in two or three years. And there are a couple of reasons for that. I'll go over some later. One of them, I believe, is just the change in how, in what type of housing is being constructed and moving into this region. The Grand Parkway is playing a huge role in that, your land values have increased. So I'll talk about that more later. But you've seen 2% to 3% growth annually. And this is your kindergarten growth chart. So going back all the way to the early 1990s, you've had very steady kindergarten growth, along with new housing and new people means more kindergartners as well. Now, if we were to look at kindergarten based on the number of births in this school district, and we get this data from the state health department. So we know how many new babies were born to mothers annually in this school district based on census tract. And so that birth line is in orange, it's the bottom line. And the blue line is your actual kindergarten enrollment. And we've adjusted the births so it matches with the year of kindergarten. So we've moved it five years so that we can compare that. And so you can always see your births are lower than your actual kindergarten enrollment. And that's because you are a high-growth school district. People are moving in with young children. So you're going to have more kindergartners than were born five years prior. Now, we look forward a little bit. We've gotten data through about 2017 now. So we can see through 2022 what we can anticipate that birth lines will be. It actually goes down in about three years, and that's not unusual. Statewide birth rates just gone down. It happened in the recession as well. We're right at that point where five years ago, the birth rate did. And it's happening again. So Texas has seen lower births in a lot of different categories. But your chart is still ticking upward because of your upward growth. So this growth is percent in kindergarten enrollment. New Caney circled again, you're number 32 in change in kindergartners, which is actually quite low. It's not up there, but really, it doesn't tell us much, because most districts have lost or really not gained too many kindergartners because of that lower birth rate. If we were to pull out various characteristics of New Caney, a couple of demographic characteristics do stand out. And really, as I told administration before, you guys are really on par with the metro area. I like to compare you to the metro area. Your median age is 35.1, very similar to the Houston area as a whole. Your population at student age is 20%. Metro-wide is 19. You travel generally 32 miles to work, 32 minutes, sorry, to work, about a little bit higher than the average Houstonian. Your median household income is almost exactly what the median household income is for this metro, 60, about $63,000. And looking at your actual economically disadvantaged students, which is a quality-of-life indicator we like to use, and that's your school district data there from T E A, you're at about 62.3%. Really on par with the state of Texas average, which is 58. So that's very close there. Now, looking at that economically disadvantaged number, it puts you right in the middle of Houston metro, really. You're ranking at about 37 with 62.3%. These numbers continue to go up in every major urban area in Texas. Now, I spoke about charters earlier, and I wanted to take a moment to talk about this. Charter schools really aren't affecting you here yet. But when you look at the total number of students that are actually transferring to charter schools, so they live in your school district and they're going to a charter school, we get data from T E A that tells us there are 42 students that do this. And they're usually traveling far because you don't have too many. They may have a parent that works at a school or something like that. When you look at some of these other school districts, you know, especially on the west side, Cyfair, Katy, you'll see that they're really starting to increase in numbers. Katy, for instance, has 2,500 Klein I S D, which is your closest neighbor with the largest number, has over 1,000 charter school students. So when you look at change, I'm sorry there, percentage-wise, you're very low, less than 1% attend charters. But when you look at change, this is a two-year change from 15 to 17 charter schools that is transferred. Again, you've had hardly any change because you don't have many. But some of these school districts in red there, Pasadena, Katy, Cyfair, have gained upwards of 1,000 students over a two-year period, and we just anticipate that to continue going up. So it's something we monitor. We don't believe this is affecting you right now, but we do know there are some really big charter systems moving into Houston metro. Idea Public Schools is one of them. They've announced eight new campuses by 2022. So we don't know where they're all going to be yet. We know where the first two will be, and they won't affect you. They'll be in Klein, Spring I S D, Houston I S D. But if we start to see these charter schools move up north into Montgomery County, it may start affecting you. And I'll talk about this a little more in our growth scenarios as well. So one of the biggest factors that affects where people are hyper-living is employment. So we always want to look at what our employment is like, and this is just a general idea here. Looking at annual change, employment's really increased in 2018 into 2019. In, for instance, Montgomery County there in the bottom, 3.6% change in the annual employment numbers. Unemployment is at a really all-time low everywhere in Texas and even nationwide. There in Montgomery County, 3.4% unemployment. So it's just things are booming at the moment. And when you look at sectors of the workforce, it tells you that, this is just this school district, this comes from the census as well, from the 2017 American Community Survey, shows you that everyone in this district is kind of spread out across the line. You've got a very diversified workforce here. So that's good. It tells me that if one sector of the economy faltered, you actually wouldn't have as big of an issue with it. But manufacturing and construction are a little higher than we can see in most districts. So manufacturing and construction are a big deal for this district. And when you look at monthly employment change, any bar here, we're going back to 2013, this is metro-wide, any bar that's orange pointed upwards is positive growth for that fund. So you can see since about February 2018, going back even toward Harvey in September 2017, Houston metro has seen positive. In fact, last year, there were over 74,000 jobs added to the economy here. The oil and gas sector's really rebounded since that 15-16 crash, and what we're seeing now is over $60 oil per barrel, and that's just as of last week. Drilling is picking up again in West Texas, and what we're starting to see, and you can read anything that economists are putting out there, companies that they're able to produce more with cuts, and so their drilling technologies are getting better. So now, when you see that price per barrel at 50, they can still keep going, and that number's actually continuing to drop. So a lot of economists have kind of thought that now Houston economy is going to be a little less shaky than it has been, a little more stabilization in that sector. But interestingly, that sector's not the one that's growing so much. 12% of the projected added jobs that the Houston Partnership projects for this coming year, 2019, are in healthcare. So 12% of all projected jobs are for healthcare-related purposes. Looking around New Caney, really, one job center sticks out to me, Tapasa. It's Springwoods Village down 99. And so, really, no traffic, it's 10 minutes away from the western boundary of your district. So that's a juggernaut. And when you look at their planned construction, their planned commercial space, it will rival downtown Boston with about $9 million square feet of planned commercial space. A lot of it's under construction right now. You're looking at big companies like HP moving there. Now, granted, they're not moving in from out of metro, they're moving in from other suburbs where they're consolidating there. But it's getting jobs closer to you. So that's what we tend to look at, where the jobs are now coming, where they're actually based. Industrial development is expanding. You're seeing this in Conroe, they just purchased 600 acres just by the airport in Conroe, in the north part of the city. So that's going to be a new addition to their industrial work. I've been told by Conroe officials there already, people are signing leases without development happening yet. So Cleveland is also planning industrial parks way up there, believe it or not. So we're seeing this industrial development push out to the suburbs where land is cheaper. I don't see that stopping anytime soon. So, moving forward, housing is really what promotes all the growth here and what gets your new people in. What I have here are a couple of slides that show our methodology. And in this report that you'll be given later, every map almost is going to have a planning unit associated with it. You're going to see numbers and your entire districts divided up into these planning units. I know you're used to this. And so these are going to, for every data table you see here, projections and housing projections, we will have these summarized by planning. You can take those little planning units, you can add them together, and you can see how many new homes and new students we're expecting in these little areas, and they fit into your attendance map. So, we have to look at jurisdictions and their subdivision ordinances, and these folks can tell us a lot about what's coming up, what's in the pipeline, what subdivisions have been plotted. Houston, their jurisdiction covers really almost three-quarters of New Caney. It's everything in orange there. And Conroe is really the rest. And so then there's a little piece up in the far north that's Wood Branch and Roman Forests. But we have to pull all these subdivisions together and all the plans that come with their regulations. And we look at them, but those hash marks that you see there are also the Porter and New Caney MUDs, the SUVs. These guys have a lot of information. Everyone has to have water and utilities. So we make sure we touch base with them to know what's coming, what new housing developments are on the horizon, how much capacity there is in these utility districts that can serve your communities. If you don't have water and sewer, you can't build new homes. Now, speaking of other infrastructure, one of the big projects here, you'll see some lines drawn through your district, that blue line is the future Grand Parkway. So you know it's already under construction, I can see it right now. The interchange is under construction, and we're anticipating that eastern portion, they should start acquiring right away imminent. And we're anticipating that's still the one-lane portion of it all the way down to that building to be completed in about three or four years. So that's really going to kind of open up the northeastern quadrant of the metro area of Liberty County. It's going to improve access to your, the far reaches of your district. We also have to look at other planned roads you see there and also where you can't build. So one interesting thing on this map are the floodplains. It's really your biggest hazard anywhere in Houston metro. So some of those dark outlines you see there, those tributaries and creeks, those are your floodplains. So we know we can't really build inside the floodway, and we know there are restrictions in the floodplain, too. So we take all of that into consideration. I mentioned Grand Parkway is coming in, also nearby, Texas 242, so up in Conroe I S D. That's being expanded, so it's really opening up that portion of Conroe and Splendor as well. So you've got a couple of big east-west thoroughfares under construction. Looking at housing starts, that orange line there are the number of new home starts in Houston metro. This is looking back to 2014. You see, it took a dip during the oil crisis in 2015-16. So the blue line, blue bars are actually your housing starts in New Caney I S D. You also took a dip then, but it's really been increasing ever since. The line is narrowing the metro area in. I actually want to skip this graph and move straightforward to these, it's the same information. This is showing you single-family occupancies through, from today through October, basically when school is in session. So these one-year occupancies, we look at occupancies and not housing starts when we do our analysis, because it tells us how many homes are going to be occupied and when students might move in. You can see some of your high-growth subdivisions like Porter's Mill, which no one lived in when we did this study a couple of months ago. My suspicion is you now have new residents living in there. That's the community of Gene Camp, D.R. Orton. Tabola is your number-one community, and so we're projecting 120 occupancies by the time Snapchat is in October. And you have a couple of others scattered down to the south. Valley Ranch is still built. Valley Ranch is still building, but their single-family portions are building out. This just kind of shows you the 10-year projection. So these are broken up by planning unit. The colors represent the number of housing units. This can be anything from a single-family home in Tabola to a mobile home being constructed elsewhere. And so an apartment unit or you get the picture. It shows you that your growth is really happening all. There's not a real concentrated area. And that can be good. That can be really good for your planning. You're not having to focus all in one spot. But the big growth is happening in the north. And then some scattered still in the southeast. I wanted to kind of point out a couple of things up there in the north. One of them is the Caldwell track. I know you guys know about this. But that is where we're projecting over 1,500 housing units to be occupied in the next 10 years. The majority of which will be in a matter of five. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take them a while to develop this track. It's going to take them a while to get it going. There's still a lot of growth to happen in Conroe to the west. So we're anticipating that to really ramp up if they do get started in 2020, like or later this year like they'd want it. That could start ramping up in about two years, two, three years. And then also Tabola, we're projecting 1,800 homes, both east and west, of 59. So that really, Tabola is your leader. If you had to pick one community that is going to have the most homes, it's Tabola. One interesting tidbit on this map, you'll see a little community called Rabbit Hill. That's a tiny house community off 404, kind of just north of Grand Parkway here. I've seen about three of these pop up in the metro area. We don't know how many students are going to live in them. They're a little smaller than a typical mobile home, about 400 square feet. So we're just going to have to wait and see. We projected some students to live there. It's about 240 units, and it's under construction now. But we have a couple of question marks. In the north, we know there's an investor who owns about 2,000 acres. You'll see that labeled as CBT up there off Gene Campbell. That could develop in the next 10 years. We don't know exactly when it could start. So that's something we have to consider when we look at our high-growth scenarios that I'll get into later. We also have a large tract, the Unaganti tract, which as you know, is, they sometimes sell off to Kingwood. Once Grand Parkway opens up, that large tract is going to be adjacent to the new freeway. So we anticipate that to possibly develop within the 10-year period as well. A lot of administrators have asked us about apartments. You've seen a boom in those in recent months. And what we've done here is just showed you where our projections are concentrated. So these are projected occupancies. And you can see there's a bunch of dots there. The red blobs are where we're expecting higher numbers of apartments to be constructed and a bigger impact on your student population. The blue dots, we're not so certain about, or they may have a lower impact based on the market. Valley Ranch is where we're focusing that. You can see several properties there. And then again, in the south along North Park, you know there's a couple of new projects already ongoing. And so we also think that along Grand Parkway, once some of these new developments start to be, they're going to see growth in multifamily there long term. But I did want to point out a couple of things. I mentioned that Tabola will be the most impactful single-family development. And then that Caldwell Company tract then is planned for over 4,000 homes along Grand Parkway. But I mentioned manufactured housing. That's something that's changed over the last five or six years. You don't have as many new manufactured housing properties being developed here because, well, they've moved north. They've moved north into Conroe or Splendor, where the land is more affordable. So that's something that's changed. It's changed, and you can see it in your student growth patterns or growth rates. Mobile home communities have more students. Also, the new tiny home community I mentioned, the market's changing as well. So the manufactured housing is now smaller and more compact. Looking at apartments and multifamily growth, Valley Ranch would like to add 1,000 to 2,000 multifamily units. They already have about 400 under construction just to our west. They're looking to add maybe in the next five years, 1,000 more. And I'll tell you this, apartments are very market oriented. So this can change. They could have a commercial center develop and that could be building before apartments. So this is going to change from year to year. They may say they want 2,000 units, but that may not necessarily happen. Markets will dictate when and where those get built. But we're projecting more and more. Some of them will be age restricted. There's one that they're planning to be age restricted to 50 plus. Kingwood has a couple of under construction right now, right in the HGB. There's one complex under construction. There's another one planned adjacent to the HGB. We've also heard someone's possibly got a tract under contract south of New Caney, Middlesbrough. So really the 59 corridor is booming right now. Again, market conditions can change that. So when you look at total housing occupancies and what we're projecting, we're projecting in the far right bottom, you'll see that 19,133. That's the number of housing units, all housing units, apartments, manufactured, and single-family over the next 10 years. Single-family makes up about 55% of that, with about 10,000 units. Multifamily, about 30% of that 10 years. The single-family creeps up every year. You're just going to gain more and more every year as these new developments move forward. And the demand is now in your area. Multifamily, you're going to have a spike in about a year or two because of what's happening right now. You might trail off, and then we're projecting more throughout the 10-year period. And you can see that in this graph right here. The blue bars represent the first five years of the projection period. So those two, that bar there to the left, almost 4,000 single-family homes are projected through 2023. But then really, look, it almost doubles from 2023 to 2028. You start getting these big master planning communities moving, and you're going to see more and more homes. I've mentioned this to the administration. Conroe ISD still has quite a few thousand homes to be built along the 99 corridor to your west. So throughout the next five years, those are going to start building out. That's when you're really going to start seeing more impact. When you look at this, we call these our ratios. So how many students live in each house? This is a very generalized number. So for all single-family homes, which includes your traditional homes like Tabola, it also includes mobile homes. We have 0.64 students per unit, per home. But that can vary dramatically. In parts of Oakhurst and Kingwood, the number is below 0.2. In Tabola, it's 0.44. And in many of your manufactured housing, it's over one student per home. Your multifamily, it averages 0.2 students per unit. When you look at the growth over the last year, so 2017 to 2018, 79% on that green line there, 79% of your growth came from your actively building subdivisions like Tabola. So that's where your growth is really focused. Your blue, we call them our blue neighborhoods on your maps. You're going to notice all the existing neighborhoods are blue. Those really didn't have much loss, they didn't have much gain. Some school districts that are more mature than yours, you can see major losses in those existing neighborhoods. But you aren't seeing that. Apartments make up about 10% of your neighborhood growth right now. Now, when we look at projections, and this is based on your snapshot data. So October 2019, October 2019, we're looking at another 492 students. A little higher than this year's growth rate. And that can be in and on, just your current students, which grade they're in, and the new housing coming into the district. So we should be next year over 15,800. By 2023, 18,377. And then by 2028, 22,100. This is using our moderate growth scenario. Remember earlier I mentioned we have three scenarios? So the difference here, this is a very typical suburban school district graph. There's not any anomalies, there's nothing funky about it. If you have slower growth, your 10-year projection might look more like 20,000 students. That's looking at it today. We know two, three years from now, the market could change, and our numbers would change. That could also mean you have a charter school. That could instantly enroll hundreds of New Caney students. So we have to take that into consideration when we have. We're not anticipating any in the next couple of years, but six years from now, who knows? The high-growth scenario of 24,577 could mean maybe the Caldwell track gets started sooner. They ramp it up sooner. Maybe another large tract, for instance, the Unaganti tract, develops sooner. We don't know then. So we have to kind of think about that as well. But really, 22,000 is your mark. It's for our moderate growth scenario. So that's your overall district numbers. And now Chris will just present all of the information related to schools. That's what everyone wants to hear.
Okay, just got a few slides to wrap this up here. Hopefully, these are maybe some of the most interesting slides. Because at the end of the day, you've got to understand what all of the words the message has said mean for you when you're in these schools somewhere. And so what we do with all of that data is we take it and we have the economy and the projected housing, the students' performance, recent trends, and your children's studies, that means where your kids are today. And we roll that together into projections by planning unit. You saw those on the map. For each year of the projection period, which is 10 years, and we do this by grade period. And so we do go ahead and project for 10 years. We know that the first five years is going to be more reliable than the last five years. But if you guys need to plan for a high school, it's two years to build it. It's bond before that, it's finding a site, it's designing it. So there's a really long lead time that you need. And we understand that the last five years is maybe less reliable, but we'd like to know where we think we're heading in a situation like that. So once we have the data by planning unit, the great first thing that we have to do is put it back into your attendance zones as you have them today and figure out where we're going. And so the maps that you see here are the projected resident students. So it's where the students live today, or where we're projecting them to live. That doesn't necessarily mean where they're going to go to school. In the case of your elementary kids, you've got about 260 students transferring around. And we call them transfers for any reason. It can be a teacher's child that goes to school with that teacher. If the teacher, you know, works across the district, it could be for a special program. And it could be for any reason that that child is in school at a campus not where they're actually sitting for. So these are the 2018, 19, and the 2028, 29 projections. So that's your 10-year timeframe. The capacity for most of your elementary schools, that 100% capacity, that means the max capacity there, is around 1,000 students. New Caney's at 900, Porter is 800 going up to 1,000, and Kings Manor is 900. The moral of it, you can keep in mind, 1,000 students for each one of these when you're looking at all of it at the map here. Some of these are very flat. We're expecting enrollment to really kind of be relatively stable at, say, Woods Branch and Kings Manor. Some like Crippen and Taboa, we're expecting, you know, huge increases here at Taboa, with as many as 1,123 students at the end of the projection period, and Crippen at 12,24. Now, we've color coded this chart. This is the 10-year projection period. And color means you have a little work to do. So the way we color coded this chart is this is your projected geocoded students. Geocoded, do you remember that? And we compared that to the capacity figures that I just talked about. And I know you're going to be adding capacity in the census system, but this is comparing to the capacity that you have on the ground today. And so when you see yellow, that means that our projected enrollment is at about 80% of capacity. The orange is 90%, and the red is 100% of capacity. So we know that we're looking at Porter going up to 1,000, and so many of the rest of them already being at 1,000. But Crippen and Oakley and Porter and Taboa are all projected to be over 1,000 students by the end of the projection period. And so you can see where you're looking at need in the future. And even some of these that are, as you're getting, you know, 897 students maybe in the school that holds 1,000, you're probably going to be getting really full, and Caney needs to be considering the next steps here for the district. Okay, moving on to the middle schools. Same thing, these are the geocoded students here. We have about 100 students that are transferring around from school to school. We have it broken out on a table and reported for interested. The capacity for now is 1,000 or 1,100 students. We have a couple of schools though that are going to go up, Kiper Crossing in 2021, and one to others going up to 1,500 students. So I'm sorry, Woodbridge Forest is going up to 1,500 students. So again, you've got some growth plans and some things on the table here to handle the growth. But you can see the charts off the color code, just from the get-go. Every single cell is colored here, so that means that all of your facilities, we would be projecting at 80, at least 80% to start. By the time you're seeing all of that red, they're over 100% of capacity. So based on what you've got on the ground today by 2025, we would be looking at all of the schools being at capacity over 100%. And even by the end of the projection period with a larger capacity at Kiper Crossing, it would be full. And so we'd be looking at New Caney and White Oak and Woodbridge Forest, all being 1,200 or 1,300 students. And then at the high school level, same sort of thing here. We've got the two zones. Do keep in mind, this is every high school student, this does not include, but this does include and doesn't pull out your early college students, because these are the zones that they live in and projecting them to live in. So the great thing, when I first looked at these, I'm used to working with a lot of school districts that have 3,000, 3,500 students in each one of their high schools. So your zones look great, because they're both balanced at 3,500 students in the long term, except that's not what your schools are going to hold. And so that's what we've got to look at on the next page here. Okay, and so again, everything is colored. We do know that we've got another plan for the third high school here in the south. But if you're looking at New Caney, Porter, and the third high school, all even being at maximum capacity and of the new school coming stages, we're looking at all the students being full by the end of the projection period. The little map here, you've got New Caney and Porter in 2028. And in this particular slide, it shows about 7,000 students. And so based on your current capacity, each of your third school will be full by the end too. So by the end of the projection period, you guys are going to need to be, based on this moderate growth scenario, well on the way to looking at high schools before. Do you all have any questions? Some runs, and people that are going to retire. He smiles, it really wants to do it right now. It's a lot of really good information.
It has a lot of.
It's a lot.
It's a lot of information.
So discussing the charter schools, being that we are 62.8, does that affect why charter schools would come here? And to me, we're not like a beacon of white charter schools.
Yeah, not anymore. So 15 years ago, charters were, where were they? They were mostly in Beadley ISD, Houston ISD, where you had lower socioeconomic folks living, concentrated. And they focused their efforts there. That's where they were originally marketed to that. They wanted to enter areas that were lower performing and change that. The thing is, they don't do that anymore. Almost every new charter school is opening up outside of development. So in fact, many of them decided not to be closing. It's not because they're not, it's various reasons. But what I mean by this is we have districts like Sycophyr, KDC, high growth in the charter. So what it means is they're not growing as quickly as they once were. They're still growing, just because people are still moving there. So that's something we haven't seen in Montgomery County yet. The new ones are still focused, or they're sounding like Spring ISD, but they're moving this way. And I think that's the point I'm going to create across. We don't know where they are. They're marketing differently now. They're marketing to more suburban families who want language programs, international leadership programs, the one that's seen the most growth. There's not one up here, they're out on the west side. But they focus on language, so they teach their students Mandarin, English, and Spanish, I believe, first grade and kindergarten. And so that's a real draw for folks. So we have some that are sports and athletic oriented. There's one that just opened up in Spring, it's oriented in sports. We have a special ed school that's focused on dyslexia, and it's opening up in public next year. So they tend to be more programmatical and focused on that. So those are the things to consider. It's not now, you're not a new.
And a lot of the marketing has shifted almost to be a pre-part tool. You know, the light bulbs and the blazers and the columns on the building and so forth, and that's. Blackspur's and the Blazers and the columns on the building and so forth, and that's sort of the marketing that we're seeing from a lot of the, a lot of these as they move into the suburbs of international leadership, which are the one in College Station, Texas. And so that, you know, was really their, sort of their marketing focus. That's what it looked like, was free private education.
Yeah, so just, I want everyone to know that it could happen. So that's, when you look at that low growth scenario, think about that, you know, if you know in a year that one's opening up right here in the middle of New Caney, you know that you're going to see that one move up.
Because we have, we've done a study, actually, some of the aisle campuses we were asked to, when the school opened in College Station, an enormous number of students come right around us in the school because of transportation reasons, that if the parents were working elsewhere, they didn't take them along as easily to school. So they come from right around the school.
Right. Remember, most charters aren't going to provide transportation. So they, I think it was something like 60% within 35. Be aware. You probably read the article this weekend, saw it, HIC now is trying to market, they're hiring universities, where everyone's going and why they want to go to charter schools. So you're not there yet. There's still a lot of.
We monitor all of the amendments as best we can, but a lot of times they're very nonspecific. They say we're going there, but it's general area. So we contact everybody who can. We work on those, but a lot of them have to say we're going to go to the university.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job. We appreciate the time and the benefit. Thank you. Okay, the next item, six, on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments of those persons who have signed up. I believe we have one that has signed up. My name is Larry. Hello. I'm going to read a quick little legal description that we have to read, and I'll get the time for it. So the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees, anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or representative of a group, may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on the agenda tonight, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administration level to prompt resolutions of complaints and concerns. So how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We're going to start you off, you have five minutes, and then you can start off now.
So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christina Camilleri. I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. And in keeping with the excellence of New Caney ISD that we're committed to, one of the areas that I would like to address is the concern of the cheer tryout process. In our student handbooks that we get from New Caney and Porter High School, there is no procedures that are listed. There's eligibility requirements and things that a student must do to be able to try out for cheer, but there is no actual process. And so I would like to address that concern. And every year, you know, I did, Mr. Harris kindly got with me as well as Mr. Sykes, and we went over it. And, you know, they told me every year that there's a parent that's up here fighting for their child, and I believe it's because there's no transparency in the process. There is no process. There's no transparency. So when there is an issue, there's no way to back it. And this year, for example, the PHS cheer tryout process, I had several inconsistencies that I'd like to just break up. And, you know, one was the PHS Cheer Booster Club paid for the judges to come. They had three judges, the coach brought out, and they left before the scores were even entered into the system. The scores were entered in by the coach and her husband, who were the only two, and then they, you know, went home and they had access to these score sheets. So by the time that I met with Mr. Harris and Mr. Sykes on Monday, I had to, I had to question the validity of these score sheets. There was no administrator that was present that could hold them to a moral ethical code. So, you know, this is a great concern for me. So at the end of the day, you know, I have to trust what these score says, even though I don't exactly trust the validity of them, because there was no one present to be able to hold them at a high standard. So I'm here today because although I couldn't change the injustice done for my child, I'm here today to speak for going forward for the children and the parents moving forward, and hopefully Mr. Sykes and Mr. Harris won't be having to address concerns, because the process will be transparent. They asked me, you know, what would you do? And, you know, whether they, I mean, and talking with other schools that are our size, they have very regimented processes. And one is, you know, the coach is not in the, in the tryout process. They have judges that come in. They also have an administrator present as well as a board member. And, you know, Mr. Sykes is like, I don't know a board member who would do that, but I feel like at this point, you know, this is elected positions, and I know you care about all the individuals of our children. So I feel like that's not a lot to ask at this point. So I'm just asking you here today to look into that, and maybe we can get something written into the handbooks for New Caney High School and Porter High School, so that we can make the process a little more transparent and not hurt our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Item seven, on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551.074, purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071. For attorney call citation, Government Code 551.072, for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Government Code 551.082 for the purpose of student discipline. Any action as a result of a closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes in open meeting. Current time is 7:48. Board, board ended this closed meeting at 9:47. Reconvene in open session. Item eight on the agenda is reports proposed for board members.
I got them.
Anybody?
I've got them.
We're going to have an update on the construction of facility planning that we, we're currently, obviously, deep in all the time. Concerning the Porter High School cosmetology update, basically, it's at 95%. That should be right online here, expecting it to be fully optimized by the first week in May. Concerning our bottom projects, remaining work on our 2015 is nearing completion. We are doing some fire system work at Porter High School, and also at the five elementary schools are waiting to get to work, and we can't do that till summer. That will finish up pretty much everything we have from Bond 2015. And our new 2018 bond in the comprehensive school, I mean, high school number three, they're meeting, I mean, this administration is meeting weekly on the schedule. It will not look like we're a high school. I don't know why I wrote that, but, and there'll be two phases. Obviously, the building, we'll be designing the building within 10, adding one to it later, obviously. Kiefer Crossing Middle School replacement goes out to mid in August, is basically at this point is right on budget, and we will be, we will be building our own water and sewer plant for the new Kiefer Crossing Middle School. And the last one that we worked on was Woodridge is forecast begun. So that's an update for our construction. Item nine on the agenda is superintendent's report. Mr. Cowell.
All right, we've got a safety update going on. Specifically, our active threat response procedure, myself, chief, and Mr. Bachelot, we've been going around secondary campuses and addressing what the proper training is for a situation like an active shooter. So we just wanted to show you all what we've been telling them, kind of the methods and the methods of what we've been doing. So active threats, you know, this is always an expectation. After last spring, we created a heightened awareness. I guarantee everybody in this room, if you talk to you outdoors, badges, and supervision, they have been ingrained into them. We feel like if we take care of those three things and do them well, then a lot of the things you hear in the news and everything that's going to get taken care of. Our training, ACA, acknowledged you in the act. That's what we've been going around doing, had a great response so far. So I was just going to show you all what that looked like, what we've been telling the campuses. The first part of it is if you got a college, you know, pinch yourself, something's going on. We do use a perimeter that kind of shot this building, you know, to get them in the right frame of mind, what we're talking about, you know, worst case scenario. We talk about how they respond, how they communicate, how you think critically. You know, teaching 101 without good classroom management can have good disruptions of what's your attention going to be. How are you going to get 20 kids' attention in a moment's notice if they need to follow directions quickly and accurately? So we talked to them about that. Choose, this is where Paul takes over. Here's the options that we're giving our staff, you know, escape, means run away from camp. If you feel like you can get to safety, you get there. Protect, that's building a barricade in front of the door, you know, making it difficult for somebody to get in your room to get to you. And then encounter, whether that is face to face, you know, in the hallway, on the other side of the window, whatever it may be, you are face to face with the threat. We talked about those three things, acknowledging it, choosing one of these things to do, and then taking action. What we, you know, try to stress upon is, you know, don't wait for information. You see the information, you're aware of the information, you know what you got to do in that situation, adjust as you need on the fly, and have a survival mindset. Chief comes in at this time, talks about survival mindset, and it's basically one of those talks that's very impactful, do what you got to do to get home to your family. Do what you got to do to get the kids home to their family. So we talked about that. It's a very real, it's a very heavy subject, but we've had, we've had a good response from the campuses. So that's, that's what they're saying. You know, it's simple, it's straightforward, it's a hard subject, but unfortunately, the world we live in is a necessary subject. So that's, that's the training they're going. One question that we've had come up is, well, what about harming our teachers? And this is, you know, chief is our law enforcement expert, so we link him. So there are some programs out there that we can look at, you know, guarding stuff, school marshal, that kind of thing. His recommendation in terms of the city is, you know, we've been telling them, teach it or train to teach and educate. That's your job. Let the police officers, let them go after the bad guys. Y'all take care of the kids, and let the police officers come and take care of the bad guys. So that's, that's kind of our theory on that, is those guys are trained to deal with that, and future are best trained to take care of kids. That's Paul's line. So what we're doing, this year, we're going around doing a training. We're also going to produce in coordination with our department, video with our kids in the district showing what this looks like. You know, we talked about everybody else what the fire drills look like, everybody knows what shelter in place looks like. But nobody knows what it looks like to avoid a situation, to build a barricade, anything like that. So we're taking some elementary students, first graders at bench breaks, so yeah, a little part of that group. I know some of you all are too. So they're excited. We've had some conversations with them and first graders. Great ideas, you know. We said, okay, we're going to play like a, you know, hyped up super fast game of Call of Duty. That's how we explain getaway. Follow your teacher seriously, see where she's going. Then we talked about, you know, barricading. You know, when you build a fort at home, what do you do? How do you build it strong? And we're sitting in their classroom, oh, we can turn the tables up on their hands and roll them to the ground. And so it was amazing just how quick those kids come up with it. We're working with the year kids for Porter High School. Paul's actually working with them and had a practice run last Thursday, and again, great ideas from our own kids, of things that they could do, things that they could show, ways they could do it, so that way this could be a teachable tool for everybody else. Next fall, we're going to come back and show that video, review the training, meet on the campuses, and then in spring of 2020, we're going to come back and do those drills on campuses with staff. We're going to let the teachers be the class. We're going to, you know, have people, okay, to show us what it means to barricade your classroom. How would you get out of those threats here? That kind of stuff. So that's the third timeline. Like I said, we're trying to keep it very basic, very straightforward. You know, it's not one of those conversations that's real fun to have at the end of the day, but we feel it's a necessity. This is part of the process of just giving our teachers the nerve to, to keep the kids safe. One thing that, probably the most impactful thing per through all of it, is we tell them they're supported from y'all, Mr. Franklin, myself, chief, you know, your job in that situation is to get those kids home safe to their families, no matter what they got to do. You know, if they're breaking a window, do whatever you got to do to get those kids safe. And so that's been one thing that has meant a lot to our staff, is knowing that they're supported from all of us. They hear their, their jobs to get that kid home to their mom and daddy at the end of the day. So I hope I'm not asking for forgiveness on that one, but I felt strongly that, I felt y'all were supportive of that. So that, that means a lot for our staff, for them, that they are supported in those matters.
Have we looked at any of the, I know there's apparatuses and things for the classroom doors, and, you know, there's a lot of lockdown situations, barricading the door, there's mechanisms that are recently done from the inside. Looked at any of those?
I didn't. Any apparatuses like?
Like the little dials you slap into your door that's supposed to keep, keep, you know, keep, be kept.
Have we looked at?
Yes, yes, we have, we have discussed it and looked at it, and that hasn't been completely ruled out at this point. We, you know, harden the target, train the teachers to protect the room, and then we'll provide the right devices or something that may help do that.
As part of hardening the target?
By hardening the target, that means doors, badges, and supervision. If they can't get in, then there's not going to be, there's not going to be an issue. Of course, there's an exception to every rule, but we believe that by taking, by hardening the target, they're less likely to be able to get in there by empowering the teachers and the students to attack and to secure the rooms that they're in or to run away. The perfect thing is to run away and get away from it if you can. However, if there's, if there's something there outside your door, you can run away. So you barricade the door and you go in with that aspect of, yes, answer your question by understanding, is we have looked at, we have looked at devices, and they are in still consideration. So in that scenario, we're asking that teacher to make a decision either to A, barricade, or, or second scenario is to run. So.
Go.
First is run.
First option is run.
First, first option is to run if you can do it safely. You know, if you open up your door and your shopster's right around the corner, you're not, you're not going to do that to the barricade. But if you hear something in the distance, you have an exit where you can get out and get your babies out the door. You go and get as far as late as you can. Just get out and build. Perfect, thank you. Exit, book the adoption report, Miss Shaw. And I think you have a couple of introductions.
You don't need to introduce first. Okay, so we have a new fine arts director, Frank Scherer. He is currently the assistant principal at Kingwood High School, and he will be joining us this summer. And he's, his wife Carrie is with him. We also have David Dinsmore. He is the new band director at New Caney High School. He's coming from Harvard. Okay, last week, we shared some information with you regarding the textbook adoption for reading, elementary reading. The resources we're purchasing for literacy instruction, our resources that support learning for our teachers, provide classroom libraries for our kids, and books for targeted instruction for students, so we committed forward. Several of our campuses were using units of study as their primary resource, and so they were able to give us some really good feedback on that. Principals, instructional, and field coaches, and the committee of teachers were involved in making this decision. They were given opportunities to use the resources and give us feedback. It's really important for us that our students have classroom libraries where they have authentic books, and they get a choice in their reading. And so we also provided you with a chart, it's like this. And that tells you everything that's provided to all of our classrooms. So in page three, there's 48 hundred books that are going to be provided for kids. And so, anyway, it's exciting to read this, because there's a lot of great stuff. To support phonics instruction as well as spelling, grammar, and composition, we're going to utilize resources that we already have, words in a way, and patterns of power.
Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of consent counter, consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial report, consideration of purchasing report, consideration of personnel report. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the item on the consent counter? Motion has been moved and accepted. There being no further discussion, I hope you've taken all those in favor and say aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of approval of the CPR 27, the amount of $82,902.24 and furnished to install Acraven wall protection in Crippin Elementary, Valley Ranch Elementary, Benz Branch Elementary, Sorders Mill Elementary, and to install a tack boards at Crippin Elementary to bring it up to current ES bond 2015 elementary school renovation project 502-2015, presented by Mr. Cowell.
What you said. Yeah, what we're doing on this is Acraven is kind of a vinyl wall protection, put it over the walls. That way, this handles wear and tear better, it's not just shoe rock down there, you've got 800 elementary kids walking by every day. So it's a protection, it's making things last longer. The tack boards at Crippin, you know, we highly encourage the teachers to use those, or should just staple stuff to the wall, and again, making things last longer and look better. So that's what this change works about.
Any questions for the discussion? Is there a motion to approve the CPR 27, the amount of $82,902.24 to furnish, install the Acraven wall protection in Crippin Elementary, Valley Ranch Elementary, Benz Branch Elementary, Sorders Mill Elementary, and install tack board at Crippin Elementary to bring it to the current ES bond 2015 elementary renovation project 2, 502-2015? Is there a motion? Yep. The motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. If opposed, motion is approved. Item number 12, on the agenda is discuss the potential, take action upon the administration proposal for suspension without pay of teacher at Tavola, Tabola, sorry, I said trouble, Tavola Elementary, presented by Mr. Freeman.
Yes, I ask that you approve the administration's recommendation for the suspension without pay of a teacher at Tavola Elementary for good cause.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the administration proposal for the suspension without pay of a teacher at Tavola Elementary? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. If opposed, motion is approved. Item 13 on the agenda is to discuss the potential to take action upon the administration proposal to terminate the probationary contract of a teacher at Tavola Elementary at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district, presented by Mr. Freeman.
Yes, I ask that you approve the administration's recommendation to terminate this probationary contract of the teacher at Tavola Elementary at the end of the contract year for the best interest of the district.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the administration's proposal to terminate the probationary, probationary contract of a teacher at Tavola Elementary at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. If opposed, the motion is approved.
If I can add one other thing, that is, for the minutes, the teacher abandoned the position for no good cause.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. No action will be taken on item 14. Same as 15. And that leaves us up with item 16 on the agenda. We heard the one thing, Mr. Freeman.
15.
15.
15.
We got to do 15.
14.
So we got to do 15, sorry. Item 15 on the agenda is to discuss the potential to take action upon the administration proposal to terminate the probationary contract of a teacher at Valley Ranch Elementary at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district, presented by Mr. Freeman.
Yes, if you approve that administration's recommendation to terminate the probationary contract of a teacher at Valley Ranch Elementary at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the administration proposal to terminate the probationary contract of the teacher at Valley Ranch Elementary at the end of the school, at the end of the contract year in the best, best interest of the district? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. If opposed, the motion is approved. Mr. Castering?
Sir?
Item 16 on the agenda.
The previous is left the building and went on. I move to uphold the decision of the administration regarding the explosion.
There being no further discussion, being no further business, the meeting is adjourned.
We made a vote.
Oh, no, sorry. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a, is there a motion to approve item 16 on the agenda? All those in favor say aye. If opposed, motion is approved. Again, then we're going to, with there being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 10:06.